We'll follow me in order and we'll start off with prayer and then we'll have the pledge. Put our heads please. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and for the blessings you have passed down to us. We pray that you give us, that you guide us during this conference. Help us all to use good judgment when making decisions for the community we serve. We pray for our men and women in uniform and for this great nation. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Jones, favor, Hart.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, tonight, before we get started with the business at hand, we are going to honor Sissy Marie Stafford for her contributions and hard work for the Veterans Memorial Fund. Sissy has been making birdhouses and she is selling them through the flower shop and all the monies that she makes goes towards the Veterans Memorial. And she's done this several times and we thought it would be great to honor her with a plaque that states, "Hicksville Valley Council recognizes Sissy Marie Stafford for her generous donations to Hicksville Veterans Memorial Park Project. We appreciate Sissy's continuous efforts in constructing, selling, and donating proceeds from the sale of her birdhouses to the park project. Her contribution helped make the project a reality and we thank her for her generosity." Pete White wants it?
Yeah.
Here we go. Thank you so much for everything that you do for that memorial. You do a great job. So, and if you want to say anything with your dad here, okay?
She's got something big handy.
Okay, another donation.
Sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars. Okay? You guys want to gather around here? Do you want to come forward? We'll just take a picture.
Stand right there.
Want to get right here? Come right here. Get right back in here. Get together. Can you get everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody in? All right, here you go.
Good.
Can you see me Pete?
Not that, I did with the last one actually, but we'll get it all in there.
Okay, one, two, three, four. Yeah, there's.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Great. Go ahead. There you go.
Hold on, we got another one.
You got everybody?
Yeah, I think this is a different, I think the one he passed was like one fifty.
All right.
This is a fifty thousand. It's a different one.
Okay. Hey, thank you so much, Sissy.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Missy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right over here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sissy. Good job.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll pray to your mom. If you want to stay with the rest of me, you're more than welcome.
She's ready.
Okay. Going on, we'll need a motion to approve May 18th minutes. Mark Haber makes a motion to approve May 18th council minutes. We'll need a second. Second. Mick Pocraski, seconds. Roll call please.
Pocraski.
Yes.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Air.
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Okay, going on for approval of bills. If everyone's looked at bills, if they have any questions before someone makes a motion, now is the time to question.
I got my questions answered earlier and if nobody has any, I'm agree to approve the bills.
Ron Beverly makes a motion to approve the bills. We'll need a second please.
Second.
Mike Bar, seconds. Roll call please.
Hart?
Yes.
favor.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Pocraski?
Yes. Okay. Committee reports. We have several committees that have met.
I guess I'll go first. We had a police and fire committee meeting this evening. We've been gathering some information regarding some shortages on possibly covering some shifts. Apparently volunteerism is a difficult task. This day and age you get enough people to do this. So the proposal was basically to have a full-time position as an assistant chief of the EMS. Committee approved looking into that situation and making that possible subject to legal approval from Troy's office.
Okay. Everybody understand that part where we're at? Okay. We'll wait for Troy to check that out and move forward.
Does Troy know the question?
He will.
You also have in your packet the proposed rain garden. Do you all know where that is? Corner of Main and Arthur? Okay.
I'll elaborate on that a little bit. From the time we had the meeting, I know Kit was there, Diane was there. I didn't get to stay for the entire meeting, but they actually, the landscaper was down there and then the girls from water and soil. I believe the whole garden area is going to be reversed on the other side of the sidewalk. We thought that would present more of a view from the road as people are driving by and then everything else. So if you see the sidewalk kind of arching through that section, the oval area is going to be onto the right side of it, correct, where the bench is. So it's kind of reversed a little bit from what the plan is. Right, so far Diane?
Yeah, it's going to be between the sides, the rain garden itself will be between the sidewalk and the shed.
Right.
There's kind of tall grasses and such on the one side and if you were driving toward town or in Martha's Vinestead, you really wouldn't see the rain garden because of that. So we came up with the idea of putting it on either side of the sidewalk so you'd have a, if you're driving toward it, you would be able to see that there's something there to look at and stop and see.
Well, that's very nice and I'll improve the corner. You have Hicks picks minutes in your packet from their meeting. Any questions to that? If no other reports, we'll move on to administrator's report.
Yeah, I'm going to have a couple things. I guess first off, anybody got any questions as far as the actual report? Income survey, I've got something to add after, after you're done. If you got any questions, I'll answer them and then I'll do a couple other things.
Move on with them and then I'll ask you a question Kent.
On the income survey, I took down about twenty last Thursday when I had to move the finance. We've maybe gotten another ten in since. Kind of surprised. So I'll eventually get, you know, the next batch down to them. We're still coming up very short of the total. And I guess what I need to know is, once it's over and done as far as, you know, the results coming in, are you going to want to go door to door to follow through on this or not? And I'm only asking because the state of Ohio is asking me if we're totally giving up or not. And I don't know how to honestly answer that.
Refresh my memory, when's the deadline for the ladder? I mean, I think, I think we got most of them that are turned in on the first round and the second round.
Somewhere around the first weekend of July, I think is when our first ninety days was up or the initial ninety days.
Right, so we have to have everything turned in or done by then.
Yeah, I, I would think within the next week or so. If people haven't got them turned in, probably going to, you know, be past that point.
How short are you?
We needed two hundred and forty-five. Figured we'd gotten about thirty-ish. It's still going to be around two hundred. That, around you need to meet the minimum. I mean, if you want to go door to door, that's fine. It's just something I need to know before I...
Well, I mean, if everybody around the table here took twenty, that's...
That's still eighty short.
Yeah.
Why doesn't our mayor look straight into the camera and make a plea for people to turn?
Well, you know, you can make a plea and with the low subscription to the Hicks picks TV program, which is three hundred and eighty-six, you aren't going to get a lot of reply from that.
And not everybody reads the news Tribune, so.
I think door to door is probably the best way. But I make the plea. I mean, I, they, the people that watch this, maybe they'll tell someone else that we need a little help with this. And it's worth some monies to the village.
Half a million, right?
But I think it's going to come down to us going out and getting the signatures.
A half million dollars.
Yeah, a half a thousand dollars. So.
I'll make that pay the bill.
The fellas, I think we're going to have to, to help this along. That's my only...
Just check here and there or?
It's our list.
Yeah, Mommy Valley put together the list of people.
So those are the ones we got to call, the list that got sent?
Oh, yeah.
We just can't go down a certain street?
No, they give me the addresses of people that should not be on.
And it's two, it's two questions?
Yeah, that's all it is.
Two questions. So, village residents, those of you who are listening, we need your help. But again, I think what's going to come down to council taking a few. And we all take a couple hours and go take care of it and we can meet that goal. It's huge for the village. And that will help Kent. What's everybody's feelings?
Half a million dollars is a lot of money.
Well, sure it is.
The people of the village of the Hicksville should realize that we need it.
They do.
Keep your store right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going.
No?
Doing my share.
Okay, so we're going to have to get with Kent on this.
Well, no, I mean, I'll get back with you guys on that. I know what I need to tell the state.
Yeah, but you're going to have to give us a list so we can...
Yeah, I'll get all that from them when the time comes.
Okay.
I have just a question. Since the, I guess we know the addresses that, that they were originally sent to, but we don't know the addresses who have returned them, right?
I would get all that from them. They'll know all that.
They'll know, they'll...
Yeah, they do all the sorting.
Okay. Good enough. Okay, also in your packet you have the Toledo Lucas County Port Authority invitation.
You weren't done yet?
I had a couple other things real quick.
All right, go ahead.
Back to the rain garden financing. We had committed to roughly a thousand dollars. Over and above that five thousand dollar grant. Nobody knows at this point what that's going to cost. Plus that thousand dollars is that included, I guess we're going to do all the cement work. Do you guys have like a cap on how much you want to put in on this once they get a final design and estimate? Because nobody knows anything dollar-wise yet. The grant was for five thousand.
Plus the thou, yeah, and a thousand. We had...
Council voted, okay, yeah, we'd spend at least a thousand.
Can we get the, the price in, in the final plan and bring it back to council and we say yes or no whether we're going to spend that much or, or little?
No, they want to have this in by the end of June.
Well, besides that, I mean, it's very easy to spend money on landscaping. That's why we've told them to keep it like with the five thousand dollar grant at our campus. And, you know, we might want it just a tad bigger. So we've talked, but, I mean, we know that the village is going to put the sidewalk in. And so I guess, are you a little open-ended on the deal or do you want us to?
A little open-ended, but...
But not, but not, you know, I mean, I don't want to really tell them there's a lot more that they can spend on the rain garden.
I think, I think we should have some type of a dollar figure in mind. I mean, is it going to be, I mean, your landscaper should be able to tell you right now is that what you have planned right now is going to cost eight thousand dollars.
Well, he had talked about...
Four thousand dollars or?
You know, he had talked about, well, what the plan is here and then we said, okay, does that include the sidewalk? And he said, no, because then we flipped it over here. And we talked about making it a little bit bigger without adding a bunch of extra cost, making that oval.
What, what is he saying the oval's going to cost?
With the oval, the tiling from the, the drainage showing the rain garden was right around six. Except what you see there, when there's a tile, you know, there's that line that runs across here. It was going to elevate.
I mean, is that six?
It's a six.
You're right. So the problem is, most you would want to come back at us with is maybe another hundred, hundred and a half?
I don't know.
Or a thousand?
I'm just throwing it out there. After the fact, we were...
The gazebo paid for part of that originally for the, that was for the, the morning.
On that lot, yeah.
Right, okay. Gazebo would look nice, huh?
I mean, I, as far as, I mean, I think that six thousand dollars is essentially what we tell them. You know, that kind of worries that with the plan, right?
Mm-hmm. I think, I don't know where it is and if we need to expand it at a future date, we could do that. I think the, the goal is trying to get a rain garden going so we can show the community what the value of a rain garden and I think we can save some of the pretties for a later date if, if it's needed.
I don't know that there was exactly anything mentioned, I mean, specifically.
Right.
I mean, besides, we thought maybe we would put, want some trees along that back thing of a...
That could be added later. It doesn't affect what he's doing with the rain garden, right?
I mean, I think probably six thousand dollars is fine.
Gentlemen, I'm defiant. What if, what if we left it at, do what you're doing, but if you run into something where you want to change a plant or something in what you're doing and it's a very minimal cost?
Starting to sound like an engineer over there now.
We would.
We got a change order.
Yeah, we got a change order. We haven't even turned the first bay to dirt, but we've got a change order. But, you know, for some, I just don't want to see something that's done half.
Half.
Cheap.
Cheap.
Cheap. I want it, I want it to look right because I'm, I personally thought that a really nice sign that indicates we have a park down that street would also fit well on that lot. Does anybody else agree with me for a couple hundred short somewhere to allow them to spend it?
But I'm like you with your original thought. Generally, you get the price for the project before you get approval of how much you're going to spend.
They're just giving you a heads up in case.
You're sounding like an underwear.
And I guess the last thing, and this just came late this afternoon, I'll just read it verbatim, it's from ODOT. I just got off the phone with Brooks. At this point, there's not a time set yet to come back. There are a few issues we're working on with them. It could be a few days or a few weeks. Some people are wondering when ODOT's coming, you know, as much as I do.
It won't be June nineteenth, I'll bet.
They'll be here when they're here.
So that's regarding the payment through town.
Yeah, not, not my opinion, the ODOT state or people. So I don't know what the issues are or anything else, so.
Well, can't you?
It's kind of tough. They're aware of everything that's going on, but...
Kind of get them to go around that deal when it comes to the convention?
We talked about that at the pre-construction meeting.
Okay. I knew you were on topic. All right.
There we go.
Can I, can I ask you again about that catch basin event?
Yeah, I was going to get back to you. I'll see if we can't raise the one we got or something.
Well, I looked at it and the flow line off a high is, it, it needs to be at that elevation. Can't raise it. But it's sitting in there cocked anyhow. I just thought if we just went over to the curb and even if we had to cut into the curb and put a complete curb gutter there.
See, the curb's got that stoplight or street light sitting there. Ron and I talked about in the past, I'll see what you, oh, there Ron, not you. I'll see if there's something we can come up with.
For those of you wondering, it's, it's to change that catch basin up on the corner, the corner where Bruce Yobert is, where it's so deep. Change that. Make it a decent corner to go around. I feel bad. Excuse you. What is my chair, guys? Come on now.
There you go.
Are you done Kent?
Yeah, that's what I did.
Okay, my question is directed at Kent and solicitor. What have we found out about what we can or cannot do on Haber Drive backside swale?
I sent an email that I think got sent around, you know, a couple days after our last meeting, that there, there is an easement reserved in the plat.
Pass it.
Utility right of way. I think that's how it's designated, but it's not very specific. The, I have that in front of me. Lots that are on what we call the back row Haber Drive. There's other lots behind those, which obviously haven't been built on. The right of way runs down the middle, so half of it's on the lots on the back row Haber Drive and the other half is on the lots that have not been built upon. So I, you certainly have the right to approach those people and ask them to, for whatever encourages upon that lot, ask them to do it. I think though you probably, I don't know, my opinion would be try and work with them, try and tell them the needs to be done, but don't give them a, hey, you got thirty days to move the garage or whatever. I don't know what's on them. I have it out there, so.
You name it, it's on.
Yeah.
And that's where I, I'm sending around just a real rough graph. That's all it is. Something I put together after the last meeting. Got a highlight of what's, of course, are we taking and all this and that if people don't.
Do you think it'd be a good idea to go out and mark the easement for them? Certainly would.
That's what I suggested last time around, that we mark it so everybody knows what here is.
Exactly works out.
And then send a letter.
That would be better served, I think.
So you would get Wes Hoven or somebody to come out?
Yeah, I mean, I'd try to get somebody down here.
And I still think we need to set a date.
I think you do too, but I, I guess, I don't know that being, telling them they got thirty days or whatever to move it, that's probably, in my opinion, a little abrupt. Depending on, I mean, it's one thing if you got a couple trees or whatever on there. You got to cut down something if your swimming pool sits across from that. Like I said, I don't know what's on it and what's not. I just, people have said it different times.
Much like the, the mayor stated.
Why don't we do this?
Well, yeah.
Have Kent get someone in to, you know, shoot down through there where the easement is. And then we'll turn this over to committee after you get things marked. And I, I always think it's best to go talk to people rather than send a letter. And the committee can decide on how we're going to accomplish that. Question, what committee? Do we do water and sewer? Or do we do street light? I would say probably water and sewer. Their plate's pretty full with the splitting of the sewer and water. Do you always want to meet on that after they survey it?
I think I'm on both.
I know you are.
Kent, do you remember how wide it was? Was it fifteen feet? Is that what it was?
And that way, that way I think it'd be fair to everybody.
Well, once again, mark, we can find out who has the instructions on there and talk to them.
So you're going to stake everybody's backyard, right?
I have to.
Yeah, well, no, you can sign the order and tell the guy to do.
Okay. All right, that'll, that should satisfy that and we can get moving on that. That would help a lot. Anything else Kent? Ron?
Not at the moment.
Okay, all right. We have a letter. It's in your packet. Commissioners are hosting a meeting with the Toledo Lucas County Port Authority on Wednesday, June tenth, one to four thirty. Council's room in Finance County East. The meeting is for representatives from, with representatives from the Toledo Lucas County Port Authority to explain the economic development services that they can provide to our county. Commissioners would like to write, you know, it starts out with mayor and/or a representative, but, you know, I think it behoves us to attend. Would anyone else like to go? Thursday the tenth. Think about it, let me know. Okay? That's the miscellaneous part.
I got, I actually have one thing.
No, then you, we'll run the resolution.
Okay.
Did you get blamed or?
I did, but I was already over here late in the day, so that'd be timely enough if we do it as an emergency at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Now, with that, Troy's brought a resolution concerning our economic development for the industrial drive.
This is, and I see there's a little typo in the caption that I'll fix Diane. Resolution two thousand fifteen dash eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a jobs and commerce economic development agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation for a grant to help fund the extension of industrial drive and declaring an emergency. This is the fifty thousand dollar grant money. Basically, they're ready to give us the money. There's an agreement that has to be signed and entered into like everything else in order, basically for us to get our check. The only stipulation that I saw in it, and I gave Diane a copy that I printed, actually she emailed it to me, but I printed off, the copy was that the funds have to be, it sounds like the funds have to be spent on the construction itself of the road as opposed to engineering and things of that nature. So other than that.
I move we suspend the rules. We have a motion to suspend the rules by Mick Pocraski on resolution twenty fifteen dash eight.
Val, second.
Russard, second. Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
favor?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Pocraski?
Yes.
Second, third reading, resolution two thousand fifteen dash eight by caption only, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a jobs and commerce economic development agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation for a grant to help fund the extension of industrial drive and declaring an emergency.
Ron Jones makes the motion. Second please. Ron Beverly, second. Roll call please.
Pocraski?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
favor?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Troy. Then that agreement that the mayor has is okay for him to sign?
Yes, that's what, yeah, yeah.
And here's the signed copy of the resolution for them.
I guess the list, I'll get you to get to the second. Yeah, I need to talk to you.
Okay. Going on, police, money will be back. Fire, you must've got a call. I saw him head to the...
Yeah, I don't have any.
Okay, EMS. Okay, thank you for bringing that to committee. I think your idea is well taken. And once the solicitor looks at it, hopefully we have a, a good situation there that we can accomplish what is needed for the village when it comes to EMS. Nothing else there. Val called me with a little note. I didn't bring her into the committee report, but pool, you know, I'll announce that in the mayor's report. So everything is running well at the park. She wanted me to pass that on to you all. Without anything else, we'll go right into Cook's report.
You had in your council pack at the month-to-date year-to-date income tax report. And we also have a month-to-date year-to-date income tax report. We're up one percent compared to the same time last year. And I put on the table today the mayor's court report we're making through, so I just made a copy for the table today. And also the next TV night nine minutes came through today and I put a copy on the table for this. That's all I have.
Okay. Going on with mayor's report. I think we need to recognize and put out congratulations to Hicksville Aces baseball team. They're on the state and that game is on four June of, it's just Thursday. Good luck Aces. We also need to congratulate the Hicksville Aces girls softball team for winning the district, which is, which is a good thing. So when you see them on the street or you're, come in contact with them at graduation parties or whatever, pass on congratulations. And of course, then we want to congratulate our graduates. Can't believe another school year has come to pass. So, also would like to thank all the village employees for their continued efforts in providing the various services to our community. Job well done. Looks like you're getting a lot accomplished with all the new help. The pool is open, running great, twelve to six daily. I want to put out a thank you to our men and women in uniform for giving it all. Freedom is not free and without them, we in this country do not live the way we do. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Yeah?
About this bid for resurfacing?
Mentioned that.
He did?
Yeah. That's the thing he asked me about, and I'm going to bring it to the... I'm gonna bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, I guess I missed that part. I'm sorry.
No problem. I'm glad you brought it up. Yes, sir.
Mike, there were, we just recently had the regional track and field meet.
Okay.
In Clifford, and we did have a regional champ out of Hicksville for the girls' disc event.
Okay, great. Did I know that?
But there were a couple boys, I think, who went on to the regional, but they've all succumbed to, to tough competition at that level.
Well, congratulations to them also. Thanks for bringing that up, Nick. We will try and get some of these people into the council room and thank them. Hicksville has been doing very well. Okay. With that, thanks for help. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Ron Jones makes a motion to adjourn. Second, please. Ron Beverly, second. Roll call, please.
Hart?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Pocraski?
Yeah.
Haber?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.